Okay, all right, so now being a little after 6:00. We, this is the Monday, November 4th meeting in the Board of Selectmen. We started at 5:30. We had a brief executive session and now we're in open session. So our first item on the agenda is discussion regarding the town's transfer sticker policy. So, the policy is that, and this is from the Town of Plimpton Transfer Station Rules and Regulations, and I'm just, I'm not going to read the entire thing, just the part that pertains to the stickers. So it says, "Stickers must be permanently attached to driver's side rear window. Any sticker that is not permanently attached will be considered null and void and access to transfer station may be denied. Please remove old stickers prior to attaching new sticker to vehicle." So, that's the policy. All right, is there anything else we need to discuss about the?
I don't think so.
Transfer sticker policy?
I think it's pretty cut and dry.
Okay, all right. All right, that's it. Thank you all for coming in. All right, all right, so we'll move on to updates and discussions unless anybody else has anything to add about the policy. Are we good to go? Okay, perfect. All right, so updates and discussions. Warrants paid. Do we have the warrants free that were paid?
No, they're not here. They're not in correspondence.
No, because...
We were holding those, right?
Yes. There was one because I wasn't here and there was no warrant that were done. The other one, you've already...
We're going to do them next week.
Okay, all right, so we're going to hold that till next week. Speed limit regulation. Mark.
Oh, here I am. All right. So, at the last meeting, we talked about this possibility of creating safety zones and asking town meeting to authorize to do such, and there were a couple of questions, and one of them was whether there was a limit on the size of these safety zones. I went back to town council and checked on it. He felt like, no, there was no limit. It was really our discretion. And then the other question was whether the speed limit might be modified somewhat to somewhat higher than 20, and he felt like, no, that the statute was specific that the safety zone should be 20. And just along the way, I did realize that it would be pretty straightforward to just draft this, so we had it if we were going to go ahead at special town meeting, so I asked him to draft a warrant article, which he did. And I shared that with you, that draft. The one thing that came up on that is, he wrote it up, and the way the statute reads is we can do this on any non-state highway at our discretion, but that if we were going to do this on a state highway, we'd have to get DOT permission as well. He didn't add that piece into the town meeting warrant, and I discussed it with Liz, and I'd like to go ahead and just add that back in, so we had that option. The key on this to remember is what town meeting will be authorizing is giving us the authority to make these designations if we so desire, and that certainly along the way, we'd have public hearings and input from people if we were going to do it. So, really, I guess the question tonight is if indeed we want to include this article in our special town meeting.
I am absolutely in favor of including the article.
And I am as well. If only to have the authority and then spend some time making sure we're using our authority wisely.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah, we should have it in our toolbook.
Okay. Rob, you're here. What do you think? We were thinking about trying to reduce the speed limit, create some safety zones at our more dangerous intersections. Ring, or was it, it's Crescent and May? Or is it Ring and Ring?
Uh, Ring and May.
Ring and May, and several others in town.
Yeah, over at Winnetouxet, Cross Street, and whatever that connects with. Those were the ones where at least we were considering. And then possibility right out frontier, particularly the driveways.
So, does that sound like something that would make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. Perfect. Great. So, do we need to make a motion and vote on? Okay, I'll make a motion that we include the warrant article to, for the town to authorize the selectmen to create safety zones in the annual town, or special town meeting warrant.
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. So, we'll see what happens. So, we'll actually, if it's voted, we'll have a lot to talk about then because we have to decide on sizes, which may vary depending on the intersection and where, what roads to...
What roads?
To do.
And I'd certainly want a whole bunch of input, particularly from people in those areas. And there are a lot of pros to this, there are probably a couple of cons as well. And we definitely want to get the signage really right.
Absolutely. Yeah, and road markings might be an idea too, and so there's lots of ways to advertise it once we...
And I might have to learn to drive slower, too.
Well, I think a lot of us will, but that's a good thing. Then you can enjoy the scenery.
Yep. Oh, good.
Perfect. All right, so, speed limit. So, that's on the special town meeting warrant. Okay, Liz, special town meeting preparations.
Um, I don't really have anything for this for tonight. I just put it on there in case anything came up. I would anticipate that you'll need to close the warrant at the next meeting on November 18th.
November 18th, all right. Notice of jail cell bid award.
So, this was just to confirm that the jail cell, which had been declared as surplus property, that that bid was awarded to the sole bidder, which was Ken Thompson, for $203. So, he made check payable to the town. It was a cashier's check, and it has been removed from the property.
Beautiful. Okay, interim highway superintendent ratification.
So, I have two appointment slips there. One of those is to appoint Rob Furlot as the interim highway superintendent effective October 21st through June 30th of 2020, and the other one is to add Rob Furlot to the emergency management team.
Okay, and as the interim highway superintendent, he would be...
Full signing authority. Everything that was encompassed in that position.
Okay, beautiful. Okay, I'll make a motion that we appoint Rob Furlot as the interim highway superintendent effective October 21st, 2019 until June 30th of 2020.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion, we appoint Rob Furlot the emergency, to the emergency management team effective October 21st, 2019 until 6:30, 2020. Second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Rob.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rob.
Thrilled. Yay.
Join me a second, I'm going to go.
You know, my...
Okay. Um... Okay. Thank you. Are you going to go see, Trisha gets sworn in? Perfect. Yeah, do you want to give those to Robs and go get sworn in?
Yeah.
Perfect. Thank you.
That would be good.
Okay, policy regarding alcohol at town-owned properties.
So, this came up because I think I raised it by asking what was the policy. We've had things at the old townhouse, historical meetings, things like that, where people have brought wine, kind of a pick-up supper, and I think we need to make a policy. So, I do wine tasting, so I'm a little bit on the other side. Bree has gone off and looked at it, and I guess the insurance company says no way Jose.
Yep, that's exactly what you'd say.
No way, no way bring your own.
Without, without a permit. I think you'd have to get a permit, right? Or the insurance to bring your own?
You'd have to get the insurance, but...
The alcohol, Bree, to bring your own.
You'd have to have a...
Permit.
It has to be a permit. The person who would be serving the alcohol has to have, have a permit, have insurance under their own name? No.
That's just a no.
Bring your own was a no, and then the person, if it's not bring your own, they have to have their own insurance, and they also need to name the town as an additional insured. And it was pretty steep.
Kind of like what we do for these one-day permits, right? When people get, they get the tip certification and they have a firm?
Right, that person...
But it's usually not on town-owned property.
True.
Right.
So, the question is, in Halifax, they ban alcohol from all town-owned property, across the board. Doesn't matter whether you come in or have it. There was a young couple at the, the last thing we did at the Historical Society that was serving beer and wine, they had the permits.
We were named as additional insured on the policy, on Harper Brewery.
But, as, talking to the Halifax selectmen, one of the reasons they went no alcohol was that their lawyers were suggesting that, look, they may sue that person, but they'll also go after the town because they got the bigger box usually.
Right.
So, I think the question is, if we're going to have an alcohol policy and we're going to say no, should it be across the board or not?
I think it should, we should have no alcohol across the board. I know years ago, we had an incident at the townhouse, and there was some pretty severe repercussions for people that had been drinking at the townhouse, and I would hate for us to allow alcohol. I just don't think it's appropriate in a town building.
Well, this would be on the grounds, too.
Or on the grounds, exactly.
The insurance company frowned on it when I called her.
What'd they frown on?
No, she actually said that they were really, the alcohol had become an issue, and they were really cracking down on it more now so than ever. She's like, because you can't control how much somebody is consumed, you don't know what they had before they came in, they're bringing their own, and this isn't like a sample, a sip.
One of the reasons for having people tip-certify is you're supposed to be able to recognize those.
Right, exactly. So, what do you think, Mark?
No more alcohol at Board of Selectmen, mean?
No, sorry, you're going to have to get rid of your paper cup.
So, I, I think that's probably going to have to be the right answer, but what's the alternative and how much would it cost?
Uh, the alternative is to, they get these, there's never bring your own.
If somebody was to have, there was never, never be BYOB.
Never bring your own.
To get a one-day policy, you're talking $2,500.
For them?
For the person who would be having, it's like a tasting. And then they still have to list us, and any...
$2,500 per event, or?
It could be per event. It depends if they don't have an existing liquor liability policy. If I wanted to have a one-day event and I don't have one under my, but I want to have one, I could go and do an excess lines through an insurance company, they'd broker it out, and I would pay for that event.
You can have two.
I'm not tipped though.
Right.
Most of them have them because, like, John knows.
So, you just come on in, but like Bree says, if you're one-off and just want to do it, you are not in the business, then you have to go up and buy it.
So, it's cost prohibitive to do it that way, for someone who's not in the business to do this?
It would seem so at that place, yeah.
Yes, it would seem so.
Best way to do it is to not allow alcohol on town property, period.
Do we want to get some more input, or do we want to decide tonight?
I really am not interested in any additional input. I think it's cut and dry. It's just, we cannot put the town in a position that we're compromised by allowing people to drink in town buildings. It just doesn't make any sense.
I called Kingston, they do not allow it. I called Carver, they didn't allow it.
On town property.
On town property. Somebody could come in and have a one-day event and have, they're serving, like Mayflower had done something, and Cold Chest... No, but I'm saying, we could still give a one-day liquor policy to somebody not on town property. We're not excluding that.
Right, that's not going to impact that at all. It's just, there'd be no...
People to get it.
The only major impact would probably be to the Historical Society.
Right.
Should the town own it? Town own it?
And they don't have any insurance of their own, so it's kind of...
But, but maybe, and the people who did it, did it.
Right.
Vacated.
Right.
I mean, that would give you, and them, and out, if they had a, an event where they wanted to serve alcohol, that they would have to get the permits and have somebody do it that has the insurance.
The Historical Society still put the event on.
Right, just like they did last time.
Right, and then I got who, why they needed it, and then got the information from that party, and was listed on it, but the Historical Society wasn't listed as anything.
No, they shouldn't be.
So, like, there was, so they would just jump over the Historical Society, there's the loophole, and then just straight to us.
Yeah, so it seems like that's really the only option, if you really want to have alcohol served, is that it's going to have to be that way. They're going to have to get the permits and...
Like, the policy, the insurance policy has a host agreement, which is different. We had somebody and they retired, we brought two bottles of wine in, served it, you know, there's 20 people, a sip, that's totally different than having a BYOB or having a full-fledged, there's a service of wine.
I don't see how you can do it.
Because you are in control of that. We brought it as the thing for a toast, or a, it's a big difference. You know that, you didn't bring a bottle, you didn't bring a bottle, so then there's 10 bottles of wine here.
Still, if you've got liquor or alcohol on the premises...
They call it a host, I just wanted to put it, there is a host agreement, it is there, but it's, they don't like it. It was the words out of her mouth, we don't like it.
Then you become, who is that? Is it us?
Right, I think it's, it's too difficult. It's, I think it's got to be all or nothing, but that's just my opinion.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with being clear, and I agree, we have to protect the town.
Motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we adopt a alcohol policy that it's not allowed in any town buildings or on town property. Period.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so should we just send something out?
We can.
We don't know where you'd advertise that.
Maybe we should wait until there's an application.
Well, we weren't getting applications before, though.
No, we weren't. Why don't we send something?
Okay.
At least notify the Historical Society.
Okay.
I think that's good.
Okay, thank you.
I'll put together like a, a short, like a memo.
Be really clear that we're doing this to protect the town, and that it's cost prohibitive to do otherwise.
Mm-hmm. Okay. I'll, I'll circulate a draft, too. Thank you.
Thanks.
Perfect. Okay, BOS liaisons.
Well, this came up because I asked Mark if I could trade, swap.
I'll take your two for this one.
I'll raise you.
We haven't even looked at this in a while. It's nice to see you.
Can you raise that up a little, Liz? Because it's, I think, the one I want to swap is down the line.
Sure, is it council on aging?
Council on Aging and Wage and Personnel.
Okay.
So, I'm...
What, can we run through the whole thing?
Yeah.
Look at all of them? Yeah, all right, so, Mark, your agriculture.
Right.
I'm animal control. John is assessors.
I can take that over if you want.
Yes, yes, I will absolutely trade. Animal control.
This is like an option.
I want something in return.
I'll give you something in return. Okay, so John's got the assessors.
I'll raise you five.
I've got the board of health. I've got the building department. How about, do you want bylaws, too, Mark?
Oh, my God.
No, just kidding, I'll keep bylaws. All right, community preservation, that's you, which makes sense, conservation. You wanted council on aging, John?
Yes.
Okay. All right, and are you okay with cultural council?
Sure.
And finance committee?
Yep.
Finance, that's like the, the town financial group, right?
Yeah.
Okay, and then fire is John. Garden club is Mark. Highway is me. Historic is Mark. Historic Society is John.
I should, that probably should be me now, I think, don't you think?
You should be the, yeah, you've negotiated that.
Yeah, that's fine.
The lease. Okay, Historic Commission, Mark. Housing, me. Library, John. Old Colony Planning Council, me. Open Space, Mark. Planning Board, me. Do you want me to keep Planning Board?
What were you asking?
I'll keep them, that's fine, anybody. Anybody else wants another group, that's fine, I'll keep it. Okay, police is Mark. Public Safety is Mark. Recreation is me. Schools is me. Technology, John. Town Clerk, John. Tree Warden, me. Veterans, Mark. Wage and Personnel, John. Is that what you wanted, or Mark was going to take Wage and Personnel?
I was trying to slough it off a month.
Yeah, I'll take Wage and Personnel, because honestly, I don't understand that at all, and I should understand it. I'm just going back up to...
Should we change Public Safety and make it Town Center Campus?
Yeah.
Yes, that's perfect.
And then on Clerk, I'm glad to take that.
Public Safety, then.
Yeah, then that's you.
That should be, if it's going to become Town Campus, I mean, I'm the member.
All right, I'm retired.
Mark, did you say you're taking Town Clerk?
Yeah, that's all right, I'll, yeah, good.
So, this one, I'm gonna, I'll add a line, and I'm gonna make...
Why don't you just take a public safety building?
I'll, I'm gonna...
Change it to campus.
Change it to campus, and then I'll put it in alphabetical order after.
Okay, great.
You know, back to bylaw, forgiving the kidding, I'm glad to take that on if you want to get off that.
No, that's fine, because it's, it makes sense, because I've got planning and zoning and bylaw, so that's, that makes perfect sense, so, so it looks good.
Good.
Good, awesome.
So...
So, you want to just change the date?
Yeah.
Wow, that was a year and a half ago.
One of the reasons for this was Gatra, and we can take a minute while we're on this.
Sure, absolutely.
So, Liz, you've got two other. You're going to put up...
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, let me go to your...
The first one.
Do you want the first, do you want this one first?
No, the other one. So, this is all the regional transportation associations under the state, and you can see out in the western part of Massachusetts, there's a little bit of white, but basically, there's transit authorities that cover almost the whole state. However, if we then go to the next one, the South Shore one, the South Shore, you can see the brown, that's Gatra.
Okay.
The plaid that's above Gatra is the Breckton Regional Transit Authority. The cape is totally take, is totally covered, as are the islands, and that little white spot where Gatra, and there's a line to it, is Halifax and Plimpton.
Okay.
We're the only ones that don't have coverage for a regional transit authority.
How do we change that?
Okay, so, can we blow up the blue slide, the blue part of that?
This part?
Yes, please.
Yeah, let me try.
So, what I did was, if you take the towns, just drop it down a little, so the population of the towns, the land's size in square miles, and this eliminates any bodies of water, okay, so it's just land. That gives you a population per square mile, and you can see Carver is 313 people per square mile, and as you can now, most of them are higher because they have large populations. Duxbury, Kingston, Marshfield, Middleborough, they're all well into the 400s. Plymouth, obviously, is way up there. And when you come down the bottom, you see that Halifax actually has a population per square mile of 408. That's the third one from the bottom. Plimpton is 191, I think it is, population. So, Gatra has said to both Halifax and Plimpton, you don't have enough population per square mile, yet if you combine Halifax and Plimpton together, we have 335 population per square mile, which is actually higher than what Carver has. So, I mentioned this to Senator Brady when he's here, and he kind of nodded, but I'm sure for a nanosecond it was gone, you know. I also talked to Kathy Lenatra and gave her these slides, and said, "We need help in terms of moving this forward." And I think this is where we have to go and say, you know, there's a little twist in this, too, in that Gatra hasn't been very responsive to us.
Right.
But there's actually a job description out on the, indeed, for new executive administrators for Gatra. So, that may change the dynamics a little, and I think we need Senator Brady and our state rep Kathy Lenatra to sort of carry this forward and say, "It doesn't make sense for these two towns to be the only hole on the South Shore."
Doesn't make any sense at all.
So, that's why I wanted to carry this forward.
Okay. That sounds great.
And you could help with Brady and Lenatra.
Yeah, well, we've got a, a new executive director for Old Colony Planning Council. It's Mary Waldron. I'm not sure if any of you are familiar with her, but she was a director at Bridgewater State and has a really impressive background, and she was all about regionalization and transportation, so I can see if we can get her to help make this happen, too.
Okay, and we'll get you copies of these slides.
Beautiful, okay. So, are we going to try to set up a meeting or something? What do we need to do?
I talked to Kathy.
Is it legislation that needs to be filed?
Well, I don't know if it's legislation or just some political clout to say, "Gatra", you know. First, we've got to find out what the cost is.
Okay.
I did talk to Tom Millius, the Halifax Chair Selectman, and he was all for it. So, I think what we've got to do is just move it forward and say, "Gatra, you know, tell us why and what are the costs of this? It may be too expensive, but at least we ought to check it out."
Okay, do you want to reach out to Gatra, or you want me to reach? Okay, so John, you'll reach out to Gatra, and, and I'll reach out to Mary and let her know that we're working on this and see if she's got some suggestions on how we can make it happen, too.
Okay, good.
Okay, all right, and then after we get that, then we can try to pull in Kathleen Lenatra or whoever we need, Senator Brady, to make it happen. Okay, all right, that sounds great.
You okay with that, Mark?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Would you like this on the next agenda, or do you want to wait a couple?
Well, we'll probably have an update within two weeks.
Yeah, I'm with you.
Yeah, that sounds great, and if not, we can always take it off.
Okay.
All right, so anything else with liaisons?
I don't think so.
Okay. All right, so Columbia Gas Installation, 22 Grove Street.
We have a request for 22 Grove and also a request for 8 Grove.
Okay. Okay, so, this is, how do I service? So, it's to install new gas with a 4-by-6-foot road cut to tie into a 4-by-23 road cut trench at 22 Grove Street. It looks like this is okay for Rob. You've said you're okay with this one. And then this second road cut is to install new gas service, same thing. Well, actually, this one's got a little bit longer trench. 4-by-6 road cut to tie into a 4-by-25 road cut trench, and this one is at 8 Grove Street, and Rob is also okay with this one.
If you just bought for those.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we approve the application to install new gas service at 22 Grove Street.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Make a motion that we approve the, the permit to install new gas at 8 Grove Street.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. All right, town administrator updates.
So, I've been working with Steve Sorrow to set up a walking path for the library employees in the event of snow. They typically park in the townhouse side of the lot, down near Palma Road, and it's problematic for them to make their way up to the library. So, what we thought we would do is, we're going to come up with a spot, kind of between the fire station and the library, and Steve is going to snowblow the path for this year, and then working with the Town Campus Committee, we'll establish for next year, like, more of a permanent or semi-permanent setup, whether we pave a walkway or whatever it is that we have to do. But we figured for the short term, I think they were kind of concerned about it at the library going into this winter.
I bet.
So, we, we're going to move forward like that, so...
Well, they have to walk out into the street to get around.
Yeah, that's not good.
Yeah, it just wasn't safe.
Yeah, that's not good.
And there's not enough parking over there to really accommodate all the employees plus visitors when the library's open, so...
Did you talk to the fire chief? I mean, he's okay with the...
Yes.
Where we're going to put it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Great.
For the fiber optic, we're putting together a large meeting. Currently, looks like it'll be scheduled for November 19th. What we discovered was that our regional dispatch center is actually installing their own exclusive fiber connection... own exclusive fiber connection that will run from them to our police department. Um, and that one is being done, not by Open Cape, but that one is a combination of Comcast and industrial communications. So there was a need expressed to kind of get everybody onto the same page and make sure that the two systems can function together, not so much relative to the townhouse or the other buildings, but more for the fiber that we're putting into the police station, um, especially if people are going to be onsite working at the same time. So we're putting together a large meeting. It's representatives from the Rock, from Regional Dispatch, um, somebody from Industrial Communications, and then our people from Open Cape and their subcontractor, um, and the relevant people on our end. So we're still working through that. One of the engineers from Open Cape was onsite surveying our town buildings to figure out where this fiber connections would come in. She generated probably more questions than answers for some of the buildings. So our IT person is going to be on hand. And I think going forward, um, we may need to consider bringing a company on board, possibly even the subcontractor for Open Cape, but somebody to maintain the physical fiber network. Like, if somebody were to hit a pole, um, and the fiber came detached, somebody to, who we would call for that. And also, too, from more of a network administration role. Like, we're pretty well covered with IT in terms of our current person and setting up PCs and managing our server and that kind of thing. But I think that this requires a more specialized expertise as far as managing an overall network. So we're having this meeting on the 19th to kind of get everything in place, and then hopefully they can move forward with the installation.
Have you invited, uh, Steve Pella?
Yes, I sent him a note today.
Thanks.
Um, so he's gonna be invited. We're hoping that we can get the majority of people there on the 19th, physically in the same room to talk this out. So that's good.
It would be nice if he, he's the silver light.
He's been so helpful to us already.
He's a good resource.
Maybe we can attract, you know, that could become our, uh, resource.
Maybe.
Our admin, our network administrator?
See if we can get onto the regional.
Yeah, willing to do that. I mean, it wouldn't be for day-to-day things, like, we can do the other stuff with the IT person that we have, but it would just be the.
Most of us would be part-time, just as needed.
The higher-level stuff, just to kind of make sure that we're on the right track.
Sounds good.
He suggested the, uh, that we tie into the school with fiber optics, and we don't know what that's going to cost, but if it's cheap money, that would kind of help us.
Good time to do it.
Right. We have our free IT health check that the state is doing for us, scheduled for next Tuesday, the 12th. Ideally, they would have come in after we had the fiber installed, but, you know, it's, it's free, and they're gonna, I'll make sure that they look at other stuff, too, though, not just what's lacking in that regard, so. That should be good. And they may have some ideas for us, too, as far as somebody to help with network administration and that kind of thing. And our IT person will be on hand for that as well. I received, which I shared with, with everybody, um, the dispatch costs for next year are expected to rise significantly.
Yeah.
Um, so I shared some of those numbers with the finance committee chairperson, and I think we're gonna plan to start discussing it, like, maybe in the next month or so. We felt like we should give them a little time to refine the numbers somewhat, but either way, we're looking at a large increase, so I think we need to get everybody in the loop now and start budgeting for it and planning for it.
That's what we owe.
It didn't seem like there was much flexibility as far as the negotiation was concerned. They use a formula, and it's based on call volume and population. If they can attract some new people to join, obviously, our percentage goes down. I believe that they're in negotiations with Hanson right now, so that would be of benefit to us. The new facility that they're building, from what they said, was able to accommodate a population size of approximately 100,000 people. So they said, like, obviously, if Plymouth were to join, then they're all done, they're at capacity. And they would close it down at that point. They're not going to get more people to join and then need an even bigger facility. The new facility is, I think, 7 million, from what they said, um, and it's almost completed. They're working, though, on Hanson. They also mentioned if they could get different places on board, like even potentially Kingston, Pembroke, um, some places like that, that would kind of make sense from forming kind of a continuous network.
Plymouth is definitely out?
I don't know that they're definitely out, but from what I understand, I don't think the talks went anywhere. Like, at one point, they were mentioned as being sort of a factor and then not anymore.
One concern I had, um, that you need to check when you work with the finance committee is, the number of calls out of Plimpton versus the other towns seemed way up. And I know when we went through the whole fire thing, um, calls are kind of at the perception of whoever's putting it in. We ought to make sure that the calls that are being, that are in there are, in fact, what we believe we've actually had.
I, I agree with that, and that was a point that Chief Silva brought up during one of our meetings with them. Because for a while, when the, sometimes if the phones are down at the fire station, like, I could call next door or press the little button on my phone, and when they answer the phone and I think I'm calling over there, they answer them, and it's the Rock.
Right.
And at first, I thought it was my error. I was like, did something get lost in translation here? But if any time they're having a phone issue over there, all calls made to the fire station get routed through the Rock. So I just want to make sure that they're not factoring and stuff like that, and that was what the chief had pointed out.
Good.
Um, so we're looking to get more of an accurate, like, this is how many medicals, this is how many fire, police.
That's great, because it did look high.
Yeah.
Real high.
It seemed very high. I'd also be interested in looking at some other data, just to see.
Yes, I'm surprised.
When there was an increase, or, you know, if we can pin it down a little bit better.
Yep.
Um, so they didn't say that it was etched in stone, but when they did all the final math, it came out to, like, 203,000. And so they said, you know, we'd be, we could go with, like, an even 200. It didn't sound like there was a ton of wiggle room with the negotiation. They offered to come to any meetings that we might want them to attend. They said, you know, we're willing to come and do a full presentation and explain to Board of Selectmen, Finance Committee. They even offered to come to town meeting. And I said, we might take you up on that offer. Just so that people understand what it's for.
For such a big increase, for such a big expense, it would be worth having them come in, and preferably when Finance Committee could be here, too.
Okay.
Um, I, I, it seems like there's a lot of different ways to divvy up what the expenses are, and, uh, it's a little weird that we're paying a whole bunch every year. Presumably, we're playing for some of the hardware and the building and all that, and any other town could join four years later and with, with, um, without the added cost or assuming the burden, so. I'd like a better understanding of the formula and whether there are other formulas available.
Should I try to set up a joint meeting, maybe, with us and FinCom and them?
That'd be great.
Would that be good?
Yeah, yeah, that'd be real good.
All right, I'll work on getting that set up.
Thank you.
What are we paying now?
50,000.
That's what I thought. This is a huge increase.
It's huge. We had three, a few years for free. Uh, that was when state police was, did some grant program and everything. Um, so a few years were free, and then this current fiscal year is the second year that we've paid 50,000.
Part of this was, um, when they started, when Duxbury said they wanted to put together a regional dispatch center, there were grants, if they could bring on other towns. We were number one. So we got, you know, 50,000 is obviously understated. It costs more than that, but going four times that, I'm not sure.
They had tried to say that when it was the, the 50,000 number that we had for last fiscal year and this year, they said that that was also incorporating grants, and at the time, some of the costs were still kind of buried within their fire budget. And so they were saying that if we had just paid at face value what it was, we would have spent 175.
Okay.
They claimed that they mentioned the 175 number, um, the times that Pat Dillon and I had talked with them. I don't recall that off the top of my head, but I do recall a discussion that it would have cost more than 50, but the 50 was incorporating some grants, and we were getting kind of a discount. That much I do remember.
I think when we go into town meeting, I mean, we sold this on the idea that it was a really good opportunity, and it was, 50,000 it was. But to now come back and say, well, anyway, it's 200,000, we're going to really have to make sure we've got all our facts.
Right. And that's why I think it would be helpful to have them present. I mean, if they, if somebody asks a question about the whole history of the facility or what precipitated the new building project or things like that, I think somebody has to be in a position to answer them.
Sure.
You know, I'm happy to research it and everything, but I think hearing from the people directly there, because they can speak better, too, to how they did all of their budgeting. I guess what's happening there right now is their town manager and accounting department, they're trying to separate out dispatch. For years, it's been under the umbrella of their fire department, and they're finding, there's just too many hidden costs, so they want to take it out and have it be its standalone department, basically. At some point, they mentioned even trying to create, almost like an enterprise fund that you see places do for, like, water and sewer, where the money coming in is used and that's the money that goes out, and it just kind of continues.
Okay.
On a cyclical basis, and take it out of the town budget altogether. So, um, I'll work on getting a joint meeting set up and see if they can do the full presentation that they did for some of us the other day.
And maybe we can get Terry working on, seeing if there's any grant money available.
We can work on that, too. John and I have been in touch with her. She had some personal matters to take care of, um, but she's still on board.
Okay, perfect.
Um, let's see. I think I went through most of this stuff. Um, we're still waiting on the 61A follow-up info, um, for that right-of-first refusal request that we had got in, um, for Harju Brothers Cranberries. They're getting us more information, so the clock hasn't started on that. And then, um, I received a request from the police chief, from Matt Clancy, um, if we could name him as the deputy emergency management director. Back around the time of Pat's retirement and when we were uncertain of how we were filling that role, um, we had temporarily taken Captain Shostead and made him the deputy director, um, just in the event that Chief Silva was unavailable. But now that Chief Clancy is here and on board, um, it seems to make sense that in an emergency, if Chief Silva was unavailable, to have another chief, um, kind of filling that role, so it made sense to me.
Okay.
So if you're so inclined, if you could take a vote to appoint him as the deputy, um, emergency management director, and then just to adjust Captain Shostead to being a member.
Okay. And this would be effective immediately through 6:30, 2020?
Through 6:30 of 20.
Okay, all right, so I'll make a motion that we appoint, um, Police Chief Matt Clancy as the deputy management director, effective immediately until 6:30, 2020.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Excuse me, one more. Are you going to call him the deputy director of emergency or the deputy emergency management director?
Director.
Okay. Want to make my paperwork?
Thank you. And, um, I'll make a motion that we appoint Captain John Shostead as a member of the emergency management team.
Yes.
Effective immediately until 6:30, 2020. For a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
And then for correspondence, um, we have a letter here. It's anonymous, dated October 21st, 2019, and the person is, um, expressing some concerns about the speed limit enforcement, and, um, it does not appear that they are in favor of it. But they do offer some suggestions for traffic mitigation.
Can you forward that to us?
Yeah, yeah, we can scan it and email it.
Please.
We have a letter here from FM Global. Chief Silva, from the fire department, had applied for a grant for tablets for two pieces of apparatus, and he was successful in that. So we're receiving $4,061 for the purchase of the tablets and accessories for.
Right.
Two of his vehicles, so that was good news.
Very good.
And they came down the other day, kind of unexpectedly. They just showed up here with a nice certificate and everything, so, um, that was good. The Plimpton Council on Aging is holding their annual Christmas party on Wednesday, December 11th, at noon, at the Upland Club. Um, and there's also a gift grab for those who want to participate. There is an RSVP date on here of November 28th, so I'll post this to the website and to social media and put this out for people, um, if people want to attend with their events.
I believe that's being sponsored by the fire department.
I'm not sure, it doesn't say on here.
Um, there was something on, uh, Plimpton Helping Plimpton, so we have to just check, because it.
They're doing a sep, the fire department's doing a, I believe so. They were, they were doing a different event that if one advertisement showed it is here and one showed the Upland Club, so we're trying to get clarification on that.
It's at the Upland?
It's at the Upland, but I think it's different than.
Can you just check that, so we.
Yes, and then I'll post this.
So on the gift grab, are they looking for donations for gifts?
Um, it just says to bring a $10 gift if you want to participate.
Okay, so it's just basically the people who are there, gotcha.
Yes.
You could bring wine, then.
Yeah, you could. No, you, actually, you couldn't.
No, it's Upland Club.
You can't bring wine.
Oh, that's true.
Um, we have a notification.
John, don't start.
Don't start, John.
We have a notification from the State Lottery Commission that the Upland Club has applied for their Keno license, so it's just a notice. And then, in the Plimpton Halifax Express, um, there was a very thorough write-up about the solar hearings that the planning board was holding, um, so a lot of good community involvement there. There were tales of old Plimpton. There was a very interesting piece by Barry DeCristofano about some astronomy and different things that you could follow and look for. And there were also some great pictures of the Plimpton Girl Scouts and their Halloween party.
Very nice, that, um.
That's all I have.
So, this reminded me of Jeopardy. You know when they do the before and after? Plimpton solar power struggle? Or maybe it's Wheel of Fortune that does it, I don't know. I thought that was funny. Okay, all right. So, your update is done, correspondence, okay. So board schools for 2019, long-range master plan for town campus, so they're going to be meeting soon, aren't they?
The 19th now, I hear.
11/19, okay.
Were we going, oh, I, I won't be around.
Yeah, we were going to, all three of us, so we have to post it.
And I think I won't be able to go, but, but that's okay.
Okay, and you put a really nice list together.
I thought.
Was that good?
It was excellent, of just, um, some talking points to kind of get things.
Do you want me to forward that to them or to Colleen?
Just dress it up a little bit, yeah.
I'll make it look nice.
Yeah.
All right, you can channel me during the meeting, all right?
Okay, all right.
Liz, did we post that?
All right, so that's campus, and that's in this room?
No.
Okay, where are we meeting?
I don't know, usually.
Oh, I'm sorry, I wasn't saying no to you.
Okay.
I was saying no debris.
And that's 6:00?
They should probably meet in here.
Okay. Yeah, and you know, it might not be a bad idea to have it televised, too. If cable can make it, to have cable here.
Yeah, we can see. Be nice to be able to use a projector.
Yeah, it would be nice.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Very cool.
Yeah, I'd love to see how that goes.
Okay, especially since we've got such a nice, uh, list to work with. Okay. Okay.
Excuse me, what, do you want the Area 58, because I scheduled that?
Area 58. I think it would be helpful for people to kind of have an idea of what we're working on with the town campus.
We have tons of the certain number of dates. I think it's 120 filmings a year, and we are way behind the other towns, so there's plenty of availability to do that.
Right.
And that's at 6 o'clock?
6 o'clock, and yeah, here. Okay, senior citizen needs shared services, what we were talking about, GATRA, partnering with Halifax to try to make that happen, and.
I don't know where this comes in. We went out, Kathy Leonard, our state rep, went out and visited Hubble, took a tour. Very impressive. More impressive than the last time, I thought. They keep, they keep condensing, so they take the lines and they keep condensing them so they can bring in more work. So they're up to about 200 employees now, which is.
That's awesome.
But one of the things that came up was they can't get people. And so partly, it's, a lot of it is transportation. Yes. And especially disabled people would really work well there, because they have some, some job lines where they're just doing things. And they found that when they brought in disabled people, they're great workers, they love it, they're model employees. So they were reaching out to us and Kathy at the state level to say, you know, how can we do something? And I think we need to advertise that to our social media also. So another reason for GATRA, but also it might be something for seniors. And it doesn't have to be, it can be kind of flexible.
Are these fuller part-time jobs or both?
They could be both.
Okay.
Okay, they would like full-time. They said they went out and tried to get 50 people and almost didn't get any way near that.
I can't believe that.
Yep. And they're bringing in people from the Paul River.
Where are they advertising these positions?
I'm not sure.
Yeah, why don't we try to work with them and see what we can do?
I have seen them in Indeed, that site.
Okay.
But I haven't seen them, of course, I don't look a lot at the other ones, so I don't know.
You know, we could even just put a link out to where their jobs are posted. If they let us know that they're posting jobs, we can just put a link so that residents are aware.
Kathy was going to put together a meeting and host with them, and probably we should go and whoever, just brainstorm how we can, you know.
Help support them.
Help support them.
Yeah, absolutely.
But another reason for having transportation, that seems to be the biggest issue in the.
You know, getting the word out along the train lines, and they could even run a van from, you know, from an eight to four shift.
When you think of it, 50 people, it's not like five or 10.
That's a significant amount of people.
Significant, yeah.
Okay, yeah, we could definitely work on that one. All right, grant acquisition, you're working with Terry to try to, I think she's been working with some department heads to kind of get some ideas?
She has been, some more so than others, and then I think she encountered some personal issues that she's working through, and then she'll be back onboard, doing more.
Beautiful. All right, continued professionalization of town general and financial operations. Continue to work on that with.
I'm meeting with Liz and I, trying to overcome the system.
Oh, yeah, our financial system, our reporting system?
I got to run off, and I had to use a magnifying glass. Now, I know I'm old, but, you know, when you have to use a magnifying glass to read the report.
That's pretty challenging.
It is.
All right, volunteer outreach, strengthen town boards, committees, and commissions. I don't think we've got much, unfortunately, to report on that, but we do have to report that most of our committees were filled, so that I don't know what is still open. I think Cultural Council might still be looking for some people.
I think I recruited Ann White today.
Okay.
So we filled?
Some sent, no.
So we got three out of five?
We still need more info on Cultural Council.
Cultural Council, and I did get an email from Gail Knight, who's looking for more information, because there was a report that was due on the 15th, so I said, please stop in.
Okay.
And then Ian came in today, and I kind of, so I'm emailing her that, I said, I'll forward the emails that I sent to Jen and Gail.
Good.
I said, not a lot of committees.
Sure.
That'll be great, because I don't know much about the cultural.
You know, given that we've got 130 openings, and I think we're all filled except for about five.
That's great.
Yeah, it's pretty impressive.
Had a great group of volunteers that have come out, absolutely. Okay, explore affordable housing opportunities and use of town-owned buildings and land, and that's something that we'll be talking about in the campus. Support town administrators' goals, we continue to support. Liz's goals, continue protecting towns' natural resources and unique character, we're trying to do that, we're getting people to slow down, and the water protection efforts that are going on, too.
Moving ahead, have hired a water engineer to put together a map to give us some sense of potential areas to protect for town wells.
And I think Linda was hoping to have something for town meeting, wasn't she, for the annual town meeting? Maybe some warrant articles for water protection?
We may be ready by then.
That'd be beautiful. All right, encourage fiscally sound government. We try to do that all the time. All right, any business that wasn't on the agenda?
On the floor.
On the floor, anybody have anything? Okay. All right, dates to remember, our next meeting will be 11/18. The townhouse will be closed in observance of Veterans Day, and that is next Monday, so thank you to our veterans. We've got minutes from 10:07 and 10:28, and executive session from 10:07.
I don't have the 10.
Yeah, I don't remember seeing the 10:07 regular session.
I haven't seen those.
And I couldn't find it either.
Okay, so let's hold that one.
That's on hold, that was me.
Okay. And then the 10:07 executive session?
Uh, yep.
Did those look okay to you?
Did.
Okay, all right, so, and you wrote them, so they look, they look good to me, too. Okay, so.
Well, he could change his mind.
Motion to approve the executive session minutes from 10:07 is written.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
And then we had the, the nice minutes that you put together from the solar hearing that, that we attended. I was only there for an hour, so I don't need to be.
I didn't know you were there.
Yeah, it was backed by John Williams.
No wonder you're so knowledgeable about it. All right.
Yeah. So do you guys want to, do you want to make a motion, and I'll just abstain? I wasn't there the whole time.
All right, I make a motion, we accept the minutes as written, 10:28.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and I'll abstain.
You abstain?
Yep, I abstain, so I wasn't there the whole time. Okay, so all we are now outstanding is the minutes from 10:07, which we will take care of at our next meeting.
And we'll have today's.
And the man today's, yes, man today's. Okay, all right, rants and raves, you want to go first?
Sure. So we had a Veterans Appreciation Day here, said, and it was really well done. Kudos to Debbie Batson, Christine Winslow, and Karen Cook, who arranged this through the library. One of the interesting things was that Russell Kirsten had a little thing here, a table set up, and, you know, his mother passed away, and he'd been going through the house and the attic, and he dug out, and he had a knapsack from World War I that his grandfather carried, with all the, in the knapsack in it, all the towns that he visited. Then he had pictures from his great-grandfather, who was in the Civil War, and showing, these are old photographs.
Oh, my gosh.
I mean, just amazing. And then, of course, he was in the Air Force, and his father, I believe, was in the Army. So it was a nice continuum of just everybody, but it was a great job, and the Boy Scouts came in, marched in, showed the flag, and it was a very nice service. We had people from the VFW in Halifax. I wish more people had shown, turned out, but it was, well, well done. Jody Mulcahy sang.
Yeah.
You've seen her fabulous voice. She's in the chorus at the church next door, and I believe teaches music at Woodman Hanson. Unbelievable voice. So my rave is for all of those people who put that on, it was great.
Nice.
And a comment was made that we have a great agent in Roxanne, and maybe even though Roxanne was, you know, representing them, that's a nice.
Nice, that's always nice to get those type of compliments. Okay, so my rave would be the planning board solar hearing, and it was, you know, an emotional issue, and I thought the planning board handled it very well. It was nice that people who are concerned actually came out and had the opportunity to express their concerns, and that our planning board and the applicant and their, their team listened to, and that their concerns will be addressed. It, you know, I hear, because I'm not on Facebook, that there was a lot of back and forth on Plimpton helping Plimpton, but, you know, if you really want your voice heard, you need to come to the meetings.
Well, they did come, I'll say that.
Yeah, I think some of them did.
And I thought it was, yeah, very professional.
Yeah, it was, it was. Everybody really, because I know there, there are concerns, anytime there's change, people are concerned, and they've got, it's a balancing act, weighing the rights of the Hajiues to, to make a living and do what they need to do so that they're able to utilize their land and, and stay where they are, and, and to address the neighbors' concerns. So I thought they did a really nice job, and, and it was a, a nice environment where people felt comfortable to express their concerns, and the Hajiues were able to, to talk about, you know, their reasoning for doing this as well. So I thought it was really good.
Yeah, and I sort of echo that. I, I think that the constant challenge of balancing individual rights versus public good, and I think it was really on display there, and I think the solar bylaw that's going to be up for at special town meeting is also another example of that, and the public hearing we had a bit before that brought that out. And I think we're, it's a real challenge, but I think we're doing a pretty good job, our committees and boards, of threading that needle and keeping all concerns in mind and finding some fairly radical moderation within that, so, yeah, good thing.
All right, so that's all we've got. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Good night. Well, thank you all for coming.